Good evening. Welcome to this town council meeting this September 11th of 2025. Do we have anybody coming remotely? Have anybody heard from Alana?
Okay.
I have not.
No.
We'll have the roll call. Robbie Wilson.
Here.
Beth Justice.
Here.
Mary Hanson.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here. Larry Chuning.
Here.
Marjorie Austin.
Here.
Alana Courtney.
Here.
Having a quorum that stand for the pledge of the cleats.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as everybody is probably aware, it's a solemn occasion today because of 24 years ago was the terrorist attack. 9/11, 2001. And as is customary, we should have a moment of silence to reflect on how the world has changed since that day.
Not to mention the murder of Charlie Kirk.
And Charlie Cook would be added to the list of crimes against First Amendment. So moment of silence, please. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have two sets of minutes, August 14th and August 28th. With the acquiescence, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve its presented.
Do I have a second on that?
Beth, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public hearing ordinance 003-2025, Mr. Costin.
You, Ms. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing under the authority of 15.22204 Code of Virginia, 1950. It's amended necessary public notices have been given and the application materials have been and are available for review here in the office. This is a case that had to be rescheduled due to an advertising skip. And the applicant is, he decided he wanted to go forward this evening, although he was going to be out of state attending a family wedding. Planning Commission considered this matter last night. There was no one that spoke and there was no representation by the applicant. So there might be somebody this evening, but I'm not sure. So moving into the staff report, the location of this is 161 Cross Street. This is the restaurant that you all considered last, in a previous case as 2024 SUP 01, which was granted to allow for retail sales of food and drink together with arcade and board game access permitted with special use by and subsequently a restaurant permitted with a special use. This is pretty well known as the Urban Oyster, but I understand that they've had to undergo a name change for some copyright issues. But that's, that's the location. Property owners, Pickett Homes LLC. The applicant, Sean Pickett, the acreage is .171 acres, more or less. The tax map is 20A17A. Zoning District B1 overlay district, most like most of the town is Chesapeake Bay. The use of the property is a two-story historically mixed-use building. Adjacent composition is a mix of commercial and residential zoning. There's no significant exterior alterations proposed with the original plan or today that would alter or have any environmental impacts. The comprehensive plan identifies it as general retail and services area supporting language to this request. Alloting to the plan is as follows. Expand the economic activities commensurate with the existing character and lifestyle of the local community. Encourage a diversified vibrant environment through mixed-use development and also provide an environment for the types of employment that will sustain the local workforce through their working years. Zoning compliance has been that various state agencies and contractors were contacted for comments on the case and only the Health Department responded. And their comment was that outside seating is not going to alter the total capacity allowed for the use. I think that's set at 20. The ordinance recognizes the authority to impose conditions to mitigate adverse situations related to the general health, safety and welfare of those on or about the property, as this is an existing mixed-use area, the proposed use can be considered generally compatible. Thus, most conditions imposed were done so to avoid nuisances such as Condition 5 noise and Condition 3 hours of operation, the focus of this revision request. Now, we received no complaints since the use has been operating. Therefore, the determination to alter the conditions is to be made considering the mitigation of anticipated adverse situations related to the general health, safety and welfare of those on or about the property. Now, in the staff report, I have given you the original condition imposed and then the requested change. That's for number three, which is the hours of operation, and then number five, which is the outside service limitation. The hours of operation changes will result in approximately 50 additional hours of activity. Regardless of total hours, the operation or of operation or the hours and days, the occupancy limit of 20 will serve to limit nuisances. Staff therefore suggest altering Condition 3 as follows. Hours of operation shall be Sunday 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday 12 noon to 10:00 PM, and Tuesday through Saturday 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Now, also because the occupancy limitation, there will be no additional crowd size associated with the proposed change. However, serving patrons outside, especially in the front, might encourage other patrons or those passing by to linger and create some nuisance. Now, therefore, I came up with a recommendation that the limitation be maintained on the front, but allow for seating in the rear when the applicant was of a mindset to proceed with that. You have an amended staff report in front of you. If you draw your attention to that, the planning commission came up with this language last night. And for the record, the planning commission voted favorably on Condition number three, the alteration to Condition number three, and the alteration to Condition number five, as it's shown here on the board. So they recommend that Condition 5 be amended so that the uses authorized by the special use permit are permitted, one, on the inside of the existing structure, two, on the front patio area provided it be defined by fencing along the edge of the public sidewalk, and three, on a rear patio area after planned review and approval by the planning commission within one year approval of this special use permit. However, in no case will outside seating alter the existing occupancy limit of 20 persons established by the regulatory authorities, that being the Health Department. And at no time should the public sidewalk be blocked. And then likewise, and this is existing language, likewise, no outdoor speaker system may be utilized and there shall be no noise from inside the structure that's audible outside the structure. The staff report goes on to give you all of the conditions that were imposed originally. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I have a couple of questions here.
Yes, ma'am.
When he was granted this permit, it was good, and I've discussed this with you before. It was for him to have, you know, the games and that kind of thing there. That never really materialized.
My conversations with him said that that never really took off. They were there, but they never got used.
I had asked him during that time, why didn't you just go ahead and open it? He said finances. But he also said he wouldn't have alcohol there. And I noticed everything waited, you know, some months. Maybe it took them to get their money for their stuff, but there is alcohol there. So that's kind of a little bit of a slap in the face to us that, you know, honored that.
We always knew that there would be alcohol.
Excuse me?
We always knew that there would be.
No, we didn't. I've even got that one once. No, but anyway, also, there was supposed to be a fence put up. And the neighbors wanted eight-foot fence. We agreed on a four-foot fence. And he was extremely happy with that. Now, that has not materialized on either side. Because it was for the, I have both the old and the new. That was for the neighbors. The neighbors had asked for that.
But they're moving.
Yeah, based on concerns by adjacent property owners. Well, there's two owners. Are both sides moving?
No, just one.
Can you, Christine, can you go to the photographs? Because there's a photograph of the backyard as it looks now. That's his athlete. I took these photographs. If you can revert them. Yeah. All right, there we go. Obviously, the one on the left is the front. The one on the right is the backyard. And if I recall from the original review, the fence along the back there where the ladder is laying, that was in disrepair. That's been fixed. So there is a fence on that side. There is no fence on the other side.
Right.
So that fence would be the one closest to the intersection of Cross and Virginia, where I'm taking the picture. My back would be, you know, to the other side, which does not have a fence. There's no fence. If you go to the left, the picture on the left, there's no fence between the white building and the subject property.
Are the neighbors complaining?
We've not, we've received no complaints.
No, there's been no complaints. I'm just saying what had happened before. I'm just trying to understand. This stuff wasn't done.
I'm sure it's in here, but what exactly are you going to do as far as is more food, more food space?
I think he's just trying to expand his hours. Yeah, just to expand his, to expand his hours.
Yeah.
And to put some tables outside.
So, right. Yeah, do some outside service. I think he's, I'm thinking, I'm having to speculate as to what his thinking is, which is if I have service tables out front, people will know I'm open, that I'm serving, and they can come on in.
The planning commission was all with this. They voted.
Mr. Sir, just a point of order. I think that if there are brief questions during the town administrator's presentation, that's fine. But before there is a full-fledged discussion before council, there should be the public hearing and then it is closed and then it comes to council for discussion.
Okay.
And is there someone representing the applicant tonight? Okay, all right. So some of those questions might be better directed to them.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
Can I simply say that this was as amended? And so this is where we got to last night as planning commission. This is not how it started out.
All right. I don't understand.
Now let's open the public.
No, well, allow the applicants to present.
Okay.
I think one of the questions, Mr. Junior, if I, you know, is when you're amending conditions to a previously imposed special use permit, you have to go through the same process.
Yes.
Okay. In other words, there's not time for me to speak.
Dang, Larry.
That's settled. All right. For the applicant?
If you would have, yeah, oh, yes. Sorry.
Sorry.
As far as. Oh, my name's Kirsten Ladendorf.
And do you work for company?
I'm the general manager of this company we're speaking of.
And what's the name of it?
They're Urbana Pearl Oyster Tavern.
Okay. And you're here representing?
Mr. Pickett, because he's at a wedding in Wisconsin.
Thank you.
As far as the front, basically, this is all you're going to see unless it, and this, this area will be. There will only be these two seats. If it seems popular, they might move this and put this. That's all they want to do for the front. We don't want to put tables out there. It's, we have been okayed by the ABC Board as we are under.
Yeah, if you could address your comments to council.
Sorry. And so that's safe as long as we do have either the fencing or the roping is legal as a fence. As far as the ABC goes, I don't know as far as the town council goes. As far as the back, that's a long way away, so I can't really address it. We don't have staffing for it. So it definitely won't be in 2025, but I think he wanted to put everything together so it was done at once. I mean, and obviously wouldn't be done in 2026 in the cold weather. So as far as that goes, yes, he would like to have a garden in the back, but right now, it's, it's a pipe dream. But he didn't want to have to reapply in 2026 because it takes nine and I don't know. All it takes.
Okay. Any other questions for Kirsten?
When you say garden, are you talking about beer garden or just a garden?
Well, I think that he wants an area where he can put, where people can stand.
Oh, okay.
But it won't be a food serving area. So I don't want to, you know, speak for him.
Plant a garden. That wouldn't be a problem.
He starts making me, plant my own vegetables. We have to talk.
All right. And now we open the public hearing, correct? So opening the public hearing, we have one person signed up to speak, Carrie Robusto.
You're probably not going to hear me. I just want to say that this establishment has been an asset to the town. I frequent it. I love that they have Virginia beer and wine. So we're catering to our Virginia community. And I'm sure most of you know this, especially you, but that property was Dr. Mitchell's property of our Dr. Mitchell from the, yes. And Jim has verified this. So if he says it so, it must be. So it's, it's an important place for an establishment and I'm really happy that they're there. So I just wanted to extend my kudos to Sean and his staff. It's a great location and I'm happy they're there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Karen.
Anyone else want to speak that's not signed up? So now we can close the public hearing.
And move to approve.
All right. So I need a motion. If you could read.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Well, isn't that the discussion?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So we, we could make a motion.
You should put a motion on.
Yeah, put a motion on. We'll get it seconded and then we'll have discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I'll second.
What's the move?
Area, who?
I made the approve ordinance 003-.
You gotta have a second to discuss.
The 225.
Yeah, just. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm moved to approve ordinance 003-2025, granting revisions to Conditions 3 and 5 originally imposed by special use permit 2024-01 as recommended.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right. Motion moved to second. And now discussion.
Robbie. My questions. I see the planning commission, I guess, has kicked back. His original request was for Sunday 9 to 9 and Monday 12 to 10, correct?
Would you? No.
That's what's in the application here?
I believe that we just approved what he requested on the hours change.
I'm just Sunday 9 to 9.
Monday's noon to 10. Tuesdays through Saturdays from 9 to 9.
All right, because I say it looked like they'd shorted the hours.
Yeah.
I think they just ripped it up.
It's a different set of hours. Up here at the top, he's got Sunday to Saturday, 9 to 10.
So that's the original application.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the original application.
And then the other question I have is, is it says no outdoor speaker system may utilize. That's, that's fine. But there should be no noise from inside the structure that's audible from the outside. The only thing I have to say about that is when the bands are in the restaurants on Virginia Street, they're very clearly audible. So is that a condition in their permits? Because this seems a little bit heavy-handed for him.
I think this was in the, wasn't that in the original?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh huh. That was in the original, what we passed originally because the neighbors were concerned about.
Yeah.
All right. As long as we're not, I guess my concern is that he's getting treated differently than the other.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Right, right.
Okay. That, that answers my question. So thanks for.
Can I tell you, or thinking about what, what we asked? First of all, we felt that there needed to be a clear delineation between the sidewalk and the patio area for especially if people are drinking alcoholic beverages, that would be required. And so we required some kind of fence and that, of course, could be non-ropeing or whatever as a condition. So that is something that we added so that there would be a delineation. We wanted to make it possible for him to do this, but we wanted to do it in a way that we felt would keep people off the sidewalk, keep a delineation, et cetera. And I don't think the original, the original approved plan required a fence across the front. It was just the sides, I think.
It did not, because there would be, originally, there'd be no activity in the front.
Right, right.
Right. The fence requirement is in original condition number nine. But there's no time limit on it.
Okay.
I would think it's more appropriate to see that that gets done when and if he ever starts serving in the back.
Right. And then there was some discussion about the back patio. We have no idea what he's talking about. It's just a back patio and wanting indefinite permission to have a back patio. And planning commission felt that he should be given a year to present a plan for what it would be, not to build it, but to present a plan for approval for what it would be. So it doesn't just stay open-ended.
So is this, the trash cans are, is that the back of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Not, not the side. Okay.
No, it's the back.
That's the back of the building. But that's how we got to where we were with changes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, what?
Two of the cans that have the labels are Oyster recycling.
Oh, nice.
But they come and pick them up.
Okay.
Just so you know. And the other cans were moved and now we have agreed with Laneview for to pick up two cans for the restaurant, two cans for the upstairs, and they stayed aside.
Any other discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. This is a voice vote.
Let me say one more thing, because Robbie said about the music. If they're gonna, you know, if they're gonna have music or whatever in there, one neighbor's moving. I guess the other neighbor probably doesn't seem to have any issues. So how can we quiet him down like that? I mean, how can we put our thumb on him for that?
Put our thumb on him.
Why should we?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, I live right down the street. I've never had.
No, I'm saying why, why would we? It's what I'm saying, not we need to. I'm, I'm, why would we?
Yeah.
Right.
I just, I just, it's fair across the.
Right, right.
I don't know what was advertised, but if this is an amendment to the permit, my guess is, is that only the requested amendment was advertised.
Yes.
And so that is only what.
Oh, we're allowed to talk about.
Right.
Only alter those two that were.
Right.
Okay.
I may, the Councilman Wilson's concerned. If I remember back, that was imposed because this is sort of a mixed-use area. There's, there are residences right down the street. Whereas the other restaurants along Virginia Street are more surrounded by commercial activity and not as close to the residences as this one is. So I think that's why the limitation was put on about trying to keep the noise inside.
And that was the limitation from the originally passed.
And in knowing the property, I would think it would be difficult to get much of a band and 20 people in there.
Yeah, I played in there and it's very small. It's just solo duo.
Robbie, you live right down from it. Was there any problems with it?
I haven't had any issues there. I haven't seen any real difference in the parking. I haven't had any troubles. I haven't seen any sort of drug use, any sort of problems out of that. Honestly, it's where most of the locals seem to come.
Yeah.
You know, I've really, I like it being there. And half the time when I think I have time to go across, get a beer, it's closed. So.
You could walk home, be drinking.
So use the, before you spending the hour.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Be there right at 9:00 AM. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Voice vote. We'll start with Marjorie.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Alana.
Yes.
I say yes. Mary?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
On to the staff reports. Mr. Costin.
Thank you again. All right. You had this before you and you pack it. I will give you a few little updates or things that have happened since this was put in. I attended the finance committee meeting, following which I undertook several tasks and reported on those at your last work session. This is the activity for, for August. In addition, I attended a governor's event in Whitestone with mayor and councilmember justice, where the governor signed legislation that will provide long-term financing for several special infrastructure projects, most notably the Norris Bridge. Another bid is pending. After having met with another contractor for the museum entrance, I want to let you know that we received that bid on the 8th of September. I finally heard from the Department of Wildlife Resources concerning no wake signs. I now have several sources for signs that meet the reinforcement criteria and will start to price those out. I have already spoken to councilmember Wilson about replacement once the signs are received. The kayak launch project was started on August 30. Having received confirmed, all six agencies needed to grant permission had done so, the last being received on August the 29th. All the responses came through as no permit required. And even though we, it came out as no permit required, you still had to go through the application process. Okay? Not simple. I'm working on several water provision projects, including renewal, the permit for withdrawal that was submitted on the 5th of September in the regional water supply study, that being the provision of data to the consultants as well as one preliminary engineering work for the bridge. Now, that was submitted, that was a grant request submitted by the PDC on the 8th. In the staff report, I mentioned the big grant, but let me add a little bit more to that. In July, I reported, we presented $113,540 in expenses. VDH discounted about $32,000 with, with which I could not argue the items were just not within the scope of the grant or the contract. Total allowable project cost was determined to be $81,254 less 20%. The match would likely get back $60,940. I cautioned to keep in mind that this was the project management level of VDH. Their assessment had to go through their finance department as well as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I followed up with VDH in August and learned, as you can see in my written report, that reimbursement would not likely be made until the end of 2025. On September the 2nd, we received the reimbursement check for $60,940 and 90 cents.
How much was that again? I'm sorry.
$60,940 and 90 cents.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And so that concludes the big grant. And I'd be happy to take any questions you have about my report.
Oh, yeah. It's just time. Can I speak?
Maybe later.
Okay, so the big grant, that was the rocks and all that kind of stuff that had been done down.
Shoreline restoration. There were some improvements to the dock with running some service lines out and restoring some of the decking. But most of the work was in that shoreline restoration between, you know, if you're, if you're looking, you know, at, at the office, everything to the right of the office around towards the ramp.
Yeah, I was down there. It does look good. Although we're gonna have to dig some, some repairs down there regarding the decking and what have you. Over time. The other thing I wanted to ask you is wonderful. I see they're fixing the road down here. What's that all about?
The, oh, this road?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had received a few complaints about drainage there at that corner between South Side.
Yeah.
Like a waiting pool.
Well, uh, I, I'll take the credit for that one then. Uh, no, um, the, um. I, I just relayed it to VDOT, you know, and said, hey, you know, we've got this standing water issue.
They don't want to hear about standing water.
They, they would have hit and, um, um, said that they would put it on the work list. Um, and they started this week. Unfortunately, we didn't have any notice.
Buddy, you deserve a gold star.
All, all, all I did was just, I just passed the complaint from the left hand to the right hand and.
Well, one of you.
Well, let's, let's, let's see how, let's see how the fix.
Yeah, it may not be fixed, but when they did all the stuff with the street, that was one thing that, that they put it in. And it should have been fixed then, but, but that's okay.
I, I think they, uh, they overlayered, they caused, caused it, caused it to back up, but they're, they're, they're working on it. But we did not get notice on that, or else we would have put something out on Facebook or the website, um, I think. Uh, the message I got was someone from VDOT called me on Monday and I was out of the office on Monday. Um, so I called Lee McKnight the next day and he, he said, yeah.
Government, you gotta take it when you can get it.
Yes, absolutely.
What about, uh, the people at the end of Cross Street? Did you say anything about them?
The people at the end of.
Yeah.
That's always cross. That's been, and, and they've come out and taken a look, take, have taken.
Over and over.
Look at it over and over again.
First I've heard it.
Well, it's, yeah, it's.
That's why I was saying they didn't want to hear about us and standing water.
Because we've complained.
Yeah.
Multiple times. There, the, um, the, um, Virginia Town and whatever that is, that magazine that you've got there in front of you. There's an interesting article in there, um, they were environmental awards. I don't know if you looked at it. But they were environmental awards for, you know, different localities and counties for, for specific things they'd done. I don't remember which locality or county it was, but they took on some of their, uh, their drainage problems in, within the, the locality. With, um, various kinds of environmental things like, like, uh, rain gardens. And some other kinds of buffers to reduce the amount of water runoff, and it was very successful, so. Maybe something we should look at in the future. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Costin?
Do you have any information you could share about the grant for the Marina Bridge?
Uh, just simply that, um, it, it's, it's, it's a grant, kind of unusual. Um, it's a, it's a rural transportation grant. That, uh, the deadline and the application had to be in Monday at two o'clock. It was an open portal. And the way it was explained to me was first come, first served.
Oh.
So I don't know. What, what place we came in, you know, we're just waiting for.
When does it close? You said Monday?
It's already closed. It's already closed and been submitted. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, PDC came in, um. And that was the day we had the IT meeting and we worked through it and got the documentation in that, that they needed. Um, this grant was for preliminary engineering only with an environmental. Piece attached to it, because obviously you're dealing with water issues and wetland issues. Um, that would set you up for, um, what's going to be the best option? How to deal with it? Um, in terms of, at some point in time, there's not going to be any access.
Right.
If you, if you go in and fix that bridge. Um, or culvert, I've seen it described as a bridge, I've seen it described as a culvert. To be, it looks like a bridge.
Yeah, who is it that called it a culvert? It was that, um, was that VDOT that called it the culvert? They came what, three or four years ago and talked to us?
Yeah, but anyway, um, we haven't received any word on where we are, how we did, uh, but we asked for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
That's preliminary engineering. Yes, now, once you get your preliminary engineering done, then you've got that decision point of, do you go forward or not go forward?
Because of course we don't know what cost would be.
We don't know what the cost would be, but that's what, that's what you get from the preliminary engineering, yeah.
So when you say the kayak launch project has started, so our Eagle Scout is there? Doing what he does?
I gave him, I gave him the go ahead on Friday and he was, he was there Saturday morning.
Okay, good, so he's working on it.
He's worked, yeah.
The fence, if you haven't done it, the fence has been moved, fence has been moved, all the ashes cleared out.
Now, but question, why wasn't it, why wasn't it taken to the property? Line, is there a setback?
It is taken to the property line.
No, it's not. Cause the fence is like.
It's like six inches? No, it's like six inches.
It looked longer than that.
Oh yeah, that looks really nice.
Yeah, that was mine. That was my question too, Marjorie, is, is there anything he needs?
Yeah, does he need help? Does he need?
Nothing's changed. I know the weather hasn't been great, but is there something that we can do to help?
Did he finish the bench?
The bench, the bench has been installed. It doesn't have the seat.
Okay, so that, that's where I saw it.
What, what, um, what he's looking, what he's looking for now, or, or getting his next step is to lay down a mat. To hold down the vegetation.
Oh, there it is.
He has a commitment to get oyster shells, to place oyster shells there, and then the kayak launch will be installed.
Oh, oyster shells, you could probably get them from the.
Well, he's, he's.
The urban oyster tank.
He's, I think he needs more than two barrels. Uh, he's, he's, he's already gotten his, he's already, he got all of his wood for free from Home Depot.
Nice, yeah.
Question about the oyster shells and how they'll be used, because if I was launching my kayak there, I wouldn't want to have to drag it over at Oyster Shell.
But you, you don't want to drag it, you want to carry it, yeah, I mean, you know.
Yeah, but.
But he, he.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see, you know, using it to the sides, but I, I think you want a non-oyster shell entrance.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, that's just what I think, but, yeah.
But that's, that's kind of where, and I went down on Tuesday, um. To see if he had done any work over the weekend and, um, he, he had not, but he's, you know, he's, he's, he's got some time. He's got some time.
At this point, at least it's openly sandy access.
Absolutely.
And we're getting this for free, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's not look a gift horse in the mouth too much.
Yeah, I think that's pretty awesome.
He, he did tell me, uh, as I said before, Home Depot has donated all the wood to him, all the labor's free, obviously. Um, and the, um, we did not have to pay for any, uh, of the permits, by the way. We didn't have to pay an application fee with the permits. Um, so, um, you know, we're a lot further along than we were. You know, last month, yeah, two weeks ago, yeah.
Well, we need to, um, also think about, um. Some little thank you for him, uh, when the time comes that he's finished and we can have him back in.
Well, I think it'd be nice to, when he's completely done.
Yeah.
And recognize him, you know, cause he is, he is a citizen of, of the town.
Yeah, and Larry's got his camp.
It's a significant accomplishment. Yeah, I think, uh, I think you might be seeing more about that, you know, you might be seeing more.
You know, let's get him a gift card somewhere or something like that. I mean, just to, cause that's really cool that he's gonna, you know. Yeah, I know it's a, a, you know.
It's a service project.
Yep.
Yeah, but he still needs to be recognized, I feel.
Yep, that's fitting. Okay.
Thank you.
Treasure support.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I, we did. Send out the, uh. July treasures report. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the actual report?
No, ma'am.
Okay, some of my notes, um, as you can see from the treasures report, the quarterly interest from the three CDs at, uh, C N F Bank. Was six thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cent. That's a nice little piece of change.
Thank you for that too, Michelle.
You're welcome. Um. Looking at the, uh, cigarette tax, it is actually on the decline. Um, I do believe that the new tobacco shop out at Cook's Corner is playing into the reason why. Our cigarette tax may be going down some.
Too, cause the market sometimes isn't.
Stocked.
Doesn't have any.
Um, we'll see what happens. I'm not sure if the new gas station, they've been there working away, if, if they're gonna. Have cigarette sales, which I'm assuming all gas stations do, but we'll see. Um, the meals tax, we do have the new dockside deli, so that should create some additional revenue for us on the meals tax.
They are pretty busy.
Um, delinquent real estate, I reported on this before. I am so proud to say I have one.
Okay.
One.
For the wife or the husband?
Nope, got them done that. Um, and the one that is outstanding does have a lien on them, so, um, I.
Gonna get it either way.
It's probably through Middlesex will soon be heading for sheriff's tax sale. Uh, personal property tax, they're, they're trickling in with the DMV stops. Uh, I provided Holly with a list probably two months ago and she put them on and, you know, so. We are getting, uh, some additional revenue from that. However, that's still a little bit of a thorn in my side because we're still at nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Of uncollected personal property, but that goes back five years. So after this billing though, I'm going to be required to write off that fifth year and we'll see what that is when we get to it. Um, I am working on the, uh, past due business licenses. Late fees are being assessed. If you're late, you're late. It has created a little storms here and there, and as I explained, I cannot. Let Bill Pass go and collect hundred dollars and Mary pay the fee. If you're late, you're late and I'm. Collecting the fee, maybe if you were like brandy new and. Uh, there, there might be a little wiggle room, but for businesses that have been here, it's, it's the cost of doing business. And late fees on business licenses, um, you know, we, I'm collecting it.
Well, I know they said, some people said they didn't receive theirs. Um, I've heard a couple of people say that, so if they're, if they're, people are having problems, I'll go deliver them.
Well, they were mailed May first.
Oh.
They were.
Yeah.
They were due July one. Okay, so here we are in September.
Yeah, I won't go deliver that.
Um, and. It is what it is. They were due July one. They were, they were mailed May one. Um, what else do we have going on? Mary Bell and I are very, very close to putting out the first test for the broadcast for the new reverse nine-one-one. There's twenty-nine cubicles that we have been maneuvering through. And, um, so we're, we're, we're almost there. Uh, the USDA loan for phase two is now complete. And our monthly payment for that loan for phase two loan will be one thousand three oh six per month. Uh, today I received the fire grant in the, in the mail. That was a fifteen, for the fifteen thousand dollars. Once I get it through the, the banking system, I will cut a check for the Middlesex volunteer fire, cause it's to be passed on to them. Um, the Oyster Festival business licenses are almost complete. I have a whole stack out on my desk. And, um, just need to finalize putting them together, but there will be a few stragglers as. Spots are filled. Um. And lastly, I'm still in the process of waiting. Normally by this time I have all. The escrow companies knocking on the door, blowing up my email, and it's been a little quiet, but I believe it was CoreLogic has been purchased by. Purchased out, so the new company may be having some issues. And it won't be long and I'll be into taxes. And that's all I have for right now.
I think that's good.
You're welcome.
Michelle.
Christine. First report, please.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, we are still eagerly awaiting the receipt of our munich code book. Um, I sent out an email today asking, do you have any updates? And I did not get a response. Um, but they had told us that they would be shipped in September and it is September, so hopefully they will be here soon. Um, one of the things I did this month was I signed the town up with volunteer river counties dot org. Um, as an, as an organization, so if we ever need volunteers for something, we can put ourselves out there and ask for volunteers. And it's a really nice, um, service that they're providing. For the public, you know, individually, you can go on there and if you want to get involved and volunteer for something, all the different organizations are on there. And they post, you know, we need volunteers for this or that or this, and then you can choose, um, what you want to do, so it really. Publicizes it and gets it out there, so I think it's very nice. If you haven't seen it, it's volunteer river counties dot org. Um, we're continuing looking at IT state contracts. Um, don't know why we haven't received them. And haven't received any response to the question of why haven't we received them of the quotes? Um, and that's through, uh, VITA. Um. I did get a faster scanner. And I was able to scan three years worth of minutes in about an hour.
Wow.
So, that was really good. Um, and if you look in my office, it's like a. A hoarder's den in there. There's just piles of paper everywhere in there slowly going to be, um, scanned and then. Dealt with accordingly, all the papers.
Scan four pages at a time before or something, you said?
Yeah, it kept like jamming because the, they came out of those old books with the weird, um. Holes punched in them and they would jam and they would stick together. Um, and then my computer would go down for whatever reason, because Adobe was upset with the scan and. But it's working much better now. Um. I believe it was, you asked last month, Mr. Chuning about. How, do we have minutes from the beginning of time? And I went back and looked and the Library of Virginia has them from nineteen oh two. To nineteen eighty-eight, so we do. We have, we have all of the minutes. Since the beginning of time. Mm hmm, well. We have minutes. I don't, I don't know that we have all of them.
Yeah.
We do have them.
You can get on there.
Mm hmm. Uh, we're not, we're not in the searchable ones because it's a disaster. Thing, um, I, I am gonna talk with them about that and see, um, of course I'd have to ask you all if you even would want that.
Definitely, I'd love to have access.
The Library of Virginia and certain localities, you can search through and you can read all their old minutes. They're all posted up there.
It's very important, particularly new councils that come on. Realize the generational. Work that's going on to create what we have here.
Right.
And every council seems, they have their own thing that they're doing, but. It's important, I think, that we know what we've, what we've done fast.
Yeah, what can.
And I think also, um, if, if anybody is interested, uh, that. List that I've been creating of all of the motions, resolutions, um, and actions of the council over the years. If you just want a, a quick look, you can go down, go, oh, this is everything that they did that year. You won't see. What you'll see when you read the minutes that, you know, they discussed patents landing. Ten years ago. Those things you would have to read the minute.
So they purchased the. The Marina, uh, the council that passed the meals tax. I mean, these.
Right.
Dynamic things that have. That are really impacting us right now positively.
Right, reading back through all those minutes is how I've learned about the town since I'm a transplant.
Good.
Um. In the future, we have coming up our new server upgrade. And the staff needs to sit down and decide how we're gonna, um, set up our. Our file structure, um, so that we're all able to find things and everything's out there in a. Orderly fashion. Um, as far as professional development, I did the WCAG compliance webinar and that was, that's for the website. Um, the accessibility. And. What it was all about this particular one, I think it was through VML, um, and Adobe. And I did not know this. And it just made me kind of go, oh. Every PDF we have out there, you know, minutes, everything we have posted on those, it has to be accessible. It has to be tagged. Any photo you have out there, of course, has to be. Um, and Adobe has come up with. Some tools that some are free and some I'm sure they would charge for to automatically, um. Put those accessibility tags on your PDFs as you're creating them. Um, so that'll help. Um, but all of the, like all of our historical minutes that are out there right now will have to be. Um, redone as a new PDF with all those accessibility tags and then just put back up.
Can, can I ask, um. So you have to go back and do that to all of your records as opposed to from the date that the requirement started and forward?
Anything that's on your website.
Oh, on the website, okay, if it's on the website, okay.
Right, and so that's something I, um.
That makes sense.
Once, once we determine that, might come back to council and say, how many years do you want to keep on the website?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, because.
Certainly.
So it is laborious tagging everything. It's, it's a huge task.
The answer's one year.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the public is always welcome to comment and I've got them in books, you can. You can sit there and read them if your heart's content. We can make you copies, send you a PDF, whatever. Um, I also did an artificial atten- intelligence and public employees webinar, which I was hoping that they would have gotten into more like what are other localities using AI for, but they didn't. They just got into, I guess they did a, a survey of people, how many people are and aren't using it.
I think it's dangerous.
It's, it's got its plus and minuses for sure and a lot of considerations. Um, the legal considerations for federal funding challenges, that was just where they went through all the Supreme Court decisions and how that affects small. It comes down, it trickles down into localities. Um, I did a, a municipal clerk webinar yesterday and then I have that records conference coming up. So I had told you before that I would, uh, let you know of a couple of things that I learned during that parliamentary procedure, um, class that I took. And one of them is that minutes, according to Robert's rules, do not require a vote. The mayor can simply ask for any changes or corrections. If there are none, then the
That may be Robert's rules, but there's the law too. So maybe we should talk about that before you.
Um, but the, the, the final thing that I said there was council makes the final decision as to how things will be done and that's what you put in your bylaws and procedures. Um, and then one thing that I just wanted to point out is reconvening after closed meeting. Um, because I think sometimes people don't understand why we have to do that. And it's so that you, you're publicly saying, okay, now we're back in meeting because you can't vote when you're not in public meeting. And you're going to take a vote right then, um, certifying it. So you have to make sure that you're clear that we are indeed back in open session before we go ahead and do that certification.
And so if anybody has any other legal questions, like things along those lines, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Christine.
Moving on to committee reports, Robbie, do you have any updates on any of the things you're working on?
Uh, most of the committee that we, um, did has been spoke of in last week and this week. Um, really the only thing set stand in the pool slide, I'm working on that, trying to get a meeting set up with them. And they proposed a date, I had to work, I couldn't do it. Um, in addition, Michelle sent me a, a grant application from a, a playground equipment manufacturer, so I applied. I have not established two-way communication with them. I then called them to follow up, haven't heard anything back, so I'm working on that.
Okay.
Um, that's about it from the finance committee.
Okay, water, the updates on the water were really the, the, uh, just, we didn't have a meeting, but the, the things that you talked about, the, the, um, stuff through the PDC with the
Withdrawal permit.
With withdrawal permit and, and those kinds of things, that's the only updates, we've already gone through that. Right, less. Yeah.
Yeah.
You didn't have anything else.
But I mean, that's basically kind of routine stuff to keep the water flowing.
Right.
Right.
Events.
Uh, we have second Saturdays in two days, our last one for the season. Um, we're gonna have Sweet Justice.
Sweet Justice will be playing.
And, uh, I pray I can keep my voice because I sound a little hoarse today. Uh, but I think a lot of people are coming because we won't be here for the Oyster Fest for the first time in like fifteen years. I think a lot of those people are coming because we won't be at the Oyster Fest. So I think that'll bring that crowd that would have come for the Oyster Fest.
And, and we lassoed Robbie to do IP.
He'll be checking IP.
Yeah, he was cornered and lassoed.
Just do more Janice Chaplin.
Yeah. Uh, I'll try. But, um, anyway, so, um, we've got two trucks, right, too? Two trucks, Marjorie?
Yes.
And, uh, it, the weather's supposed to be perfect.
The pork, the pork skin guy should be there, I'm hoping.
And the mocktail lady's gonna be there.
Yes, the mocktails will be there.
So if you like mocktails, show up for just that, but, but, uh, anyway.
Just that non-alcoholic pairing.
It's delicious, it's like lavender and, you know, all those things in, in a drink. Uh, but anyway, I think we're gonna have a good turnout.
Yeah, I do too.
A lot of people saying they're coming.
Yeah, T-Boys is coming back this time. He's had some family things happening and he wasn't able to attend, so they'll be here. Everybody loves T-Boys and, and, uh, Ned with Positive Pizza, so.
Like I said, the weather's not, I don't think the weather's gonna be out of the eighties, so.
I hope it's not out of the seventies.
Yeah, so.
All right, personnel's gotta
I think Larry wanted some, did you want to say something, Larry? I'm sorry.
Personnel's got a meeting coming up.
We have, yeah, October first to begin reviewing a draft personnel policy.
Manual.
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 All right, public comment one, who we got?
Is, excuse me, the, um, personnel manual handbook's not done yet? Okay.
Well, it's, we're getting a preliminary copy.
Right, we have a draft.
The purpose of the personnel committee meeting is for me to review the revised personnel policy manual with them. And if there are not a lot of requested changes, it will come shortly after that to the council.
It's October one.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
No one sir signed up for comment one, but this is comment two, I'll just give it to you for later.
Okay. Um, all right, one unfinished business, none new business.
One item, um, in your agenda, um, item thirteen. Um, at a recent council meeting, there was discussion that adds to the extended service rendered to the town by the, uh, Middlesex County Economic Development Authority. Uh, citizen chair of the EDA, John Anzavino, responded to the mayor uh, who shared the communication with the rest of council. That communication and its attachment follow. Um, in addition to identifying the EDA's activity, one suggested to me by Mr. Anzavino was to appoint a liaison to the EDA who could regularly report back to the entire council. The mayor solicited interest and report on that effort. There's really no fiscal impact with this. The staff recommendation, uh, and the council action requested is to appoint a member of council to serve as a liaison to the Middlesex County Economic Development Authority. Be happy to take any questions you have.
Are, are we just moving forward with appointing some, eventually appointing some?
I think the mayor, yeah.
The, um, uh, Marjorie has volunteered to do it because she's events committee and is active in those kinds of things. It seemed like, uh, an appropriate appointment. Because it dovetails with the other things that she's doing. And, uh, that would be, my recommendation would be to appoint her as the liaison to the EDA. And she did volunteer for that.
And is there a term? A term for what?
Uh, oh.
How long?
We haven't established a term. So, um, so I, 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 uh,
You could, you I have three more years on.
Tie to her. I was gonna say, for the term, for the term that she's on council and will be replaced upon, uh, her exit from council as needed.
I'm not exiting.
Upon the expiration of this term.
Of this term.
That's the only way. I'm gonna be here as long as Larry.
So is that a motion?
I move to appoint Marjorie Austin as council's liaison to the Middlesex Economic Development Authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No, take Larry.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Uh, actually, now it's, uh, Kristi Anzavino, three fifty Howard Street.
So did earlier.
Yeah, you should have gone on one.
Yeah.
No, well, I, no, I want, I wanted to wait.
Yeah.
Um, Kristi Anzavino, three five zero Howard Street. John and I were traveling, okay, let's, let me set it, the stage. We come down Howard and turn right and we're headed to town on cross. Every Saturday on our way to something different because we have a group that meets. There is always, because of the pearl, the oyster pearl that we just heard about tonight, there's pretty steady, there's full on this side. Last Saturday, there was a car on this side facing the wrong way in front of Suzanne White's, um, Ms. Arthur there. And then there was traffic coming. So it's one way and you're taking turns and it was bizarre. One of the things that we, John pointed this out to me and I looked down and it, we have very invisible, it's, you can't see it, painted curbs along from probably that building that Suzanne is in all the way to the stop sign by Virginia Street Cafe. Painted yellow, which means no parking. Around, there's, there is down by you, you have a hydrant and it's
Some hydrant all the way to the corner.
And it's, the curb is in pretty, it, it, it needs to be painted, but it also has all the weeds, you know? Tammy has sprayed great, but it's all dead weeds that are covering it. So in order for people to know that there's probably a yellow curb there and no parking, we, some work has to be done. And I do think it's the town's responsibility to paint it.
Where is it exactly?
Okay, start from Cross Street. Go, uh, we're boarded in Wiley's houses.
Cross, Cross Street on the Virginia Restaurant side.
Yes.
Between Virginia Street Restaurant and Robbie Wolfson's.
Okay.
Yep.
On the right hand, left side or?
On the right side. And there is actually, there is a no parking sign and I don't know exactly where that is. It, it doesn't start it, there's no curb. It's where the curb starts, just at the marsh.
So it needs to be painted.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Visibly see yellow.
Where it used to be.
Where it used to be.
Where did the no parking sign come from? Because we had those removed.
Hardware and staples of no parking signs along the
No, you can't, you can't.
Well, that's
You can't do that, the VDOT won't let us do that.
I guess VDOT handles that.
Well, there is a sign up, it, along there, I can't tell you where, what it said. I, I just remember seeing it, it says no parking. But the, the main distinction is the yellow curbing.
It sounds like Ted, Ted, you need to take a look at it and if it's problem, call VDOT, see, and see what they say, what they'll do. No?
I'll, I'll, I will say that, you know, we, we knew this, this, uh, was coming just prior to the meeting. Um, once we paint it, it's an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
Which means that goes to the sheriff's office. Um, so if somebody parks there and they get caught by the sheriff, the sheriff's gonna write the ticket or the deputy's gonna write the ticket and
It's not yellow now.
It, it's sort of faded.
It faded.
Was, was.
And you can't see it because there's lots of dead shrub, uh, weeds.
But that, that, those have been treated. The contractor that usually does the cleanup, i- it's a process. You know, you, you hit it with the roundup or whatever, then you come back later and, and, and take it out. So he's kind of in the midway process. But I can call VDOT and get some information on what's the process for, because I'm, I'm sure they have a standard of what type paint they have to use. It probably has to have some reflection.
Or if there's some other way to handle it.
I'm sorry.
Uh, or if there's some other way to handle it.
Right. Yeah.
I'll tell you this, I thought about bringing this up, but I've lived there since twenty thirteen. The paint has always been faded. People have always parked on both sides of the street. I just sort of like, just get along, like it's not, it hasn't been a really huge issue. I did see the car you're talking about.
Yeah, that, that does need to be addressed.
Yeah, it, you know, it's various things that cause it. It's not just that oyster barks, even when they're closed, we still get a lot of, it go, it go, that, that street definitely goes one way. I will say that I've owned it there and fussed the people that park for the fire hydrant because that seemed like a real bad land.
Well, did, we, what's, a couple of years ago, the no parking signs were moved or removed.
Yeah, in part because we weren't enforcing it.
Because, yeah, so.
That was one of
I think Steve
Well, Steve always parked all day long on a two-hour
Two-hour parking, right. Yes, I, but I thought they took all the signs. I didn't realize there was still a no parking sign.
There is still one right next to the restaurant.
Yeah.
So you're saying that if you have, uh, painted curbs or you have signage, that you have to enforce it?
You have to enforce it. My question, my, my point is, there's no one at, at the Urbana level that can enforce it.
That can enforce it. But it still, I think, has a deterrent impact, at least to some extent, maybe not a hundred percent, but
It would have some
Would have something.
I was saying to Mr. Costin that as constable for the town code, maybe I should get a packet of tickets.
Yeah.
Make some money.
And get a gun.
Billy, Billy's gonna do it.
He's gonna do it.
Uh, you could be comment two.
I'll be comment. William Mayo, three twenty Brighthack Avenue. I don't know if y'all knew Bill Schuman or not, but Bill Schuman and I went through this process of painting this yellow in the streets. The, the town, the, uh, highway department's not gonna do it. We used to have fifteen or twenty gallons in the old building downstairs. Y'all to paint. We, he'd go over and get, had two women come from the, the, uh, jail to do it. And they stopped us. I don't know why they stopped us.
That's a big fan.
But, well, the first thing was the fire hydrant right there by the sound office. People park there. You come down the street where this girl opened that wine, wine room, if a van is parked there, you cannot see anybody coming. And that was, y'all are all the way down to where you exit coming at the back. Let's go paint that, but they stopped. So it's, you might go through, okay, that's a little, but I don't think you go, you go get anything done.
Well, Tracy, um, our former town clerk, um, the, the curbing that's painted at the old town hall, that yellow, Tracy did that. No, it was you, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, Michelle, Michelle did do that. I am so sorry, Michelle.
It was, it was some other blonde lady.
Right.
So we couldn't get in and out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Because they would be there. So after, I went over, it was a Saturday morning at the dawn on my knees and I painted that whole thing in some in front of the old hardware store and it, it didn't help.
Yes.
I mean, people pretty much obeyed not parking in that traffic because the hardware store also used the parking for their businesses in the back, so.
I'm sorry, Tracy painted some fire hydrants, I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Just saying, it's, it's all right if I stand.
Yes, sir. Please. All right, um, do we have any other announcements? Second Saturday's coming up?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that. Okay.
Did, other than second Saturday?
Yeah, other than that.
Anyone?
Can I mention this?
Sure.
Can I read this really quickly? I don't know if you all, anybody saw this in the paper. Peter Mansfield, who's an engineer, wrote, wrote this as a letter to Hampton Road, Santa, is it the same thing?
You say yours and then I'll, I'll add.
Or this is what Peter wrote to HRSD. He's very smart. He's like, I'm just from a goo.
He is.
He says
Twenty-three patents.
Yeah, he's, he's really smart and he's been talking about this for years and it, this really bugs me. I'm a hundred percent behind him.
Yeah, me too.
It says, eh, this is a letter that he wrote to HRSD. HRSD believes that it is in Middlesex County's best interest to operate a wastewater treatment plant that does not meet federally mandated wastewater discharge specifications. Urbana's plant has never, and you are suggesting that we continue for the next forty or so years to continue this practice until a pipeline is completed to Williamsburg. Based on my best order of magnitude members, it would cost Middlesex County about four million dollars for the conversion of the Urbana plant, including construction of a drip disposal field for thirty-eight thousand gallons per day of wastewater treated. Although it is not required, we could also include oxidation and nutrient reduction for very little additional capital and operating cost. After the above capital costs, our county's annual disposal cost of thirty-eight thousand gallons per day of treated sewage in Urbana Creek would be about eleven thousand dollars. If we choose your plan, meaning HRSD's, which includes pollution of our historical Urbana Creek for the next forty-plus years, our annual cost will be about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That is a year, costing our town and/or county twenty-five times more than the above local in-ground drip disposal. How can HRSD, an agency of our state government, propose a plan that costs our citizens twenty-five times more to dispose of our wastewater and violate a plan that costs our citizens 25 times more to dispose of our wastewater and violates federal and state pollution laws while doing it? I think this is a really-
Yeah.
That, you know, Christine letter and I am-
The drip fields, if you think about, there's a large one out in Hartfield, kind of across from, um, uh, Wilton House. And, yeah, on the left, on the same side as the croquet club, you see there are these sort of like bunkers.
Yeah.
That is, that is a drain field. Pete came by my house about a week ago and he brought copies that he wanted to be, me to present to council. I brought them tonight, not to present them tonight, but it's on this same issue. He's got all the math. And just as a teaser, um, the, based on what he has calculated, that in-ground disposal costs would be about 80 cents per, uh, 1,000 gallons as opposed to $18.61 per 1,000 gallons with the current proposal, the current county proposal. You know, and, and Pete and I talked a lot about it and it's like, okay, yeah, who's gonna pay for it and we don't have land. He, of course, was on the county board of supervisors. He said, oh, I think you can get land for Middlesex for this. I don't know. But I think it's, I think it's worth looking at and I don't know procedurally how to, what's the best way to share this. I don't know.
Pass it on.
And I think it's very important, our creek is what makes Urbana, Urbana.
I know.
And they are polluting it and they intend to pollute it for the next 40 years. And we have been fighting this along with Sean, um, can't remember his name, remember Sean? From William and Mary had property here. He fought his tooth and nail and we all were behind him and they got nowhere and everybody just kind of gave up. He actually moved out. But I think it's really important that we look at this and address this and if Peter Mansfield can't help us in-
So many.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pete will.
I think this is a really important thing for everybody in this town to get behind. Nobody, I mean, our creek is condemned for shellfish eating. That is so wrong.
Right, and, and, and that is because, and, um,
Because of-
All the way back when, this was a, a thing that Bill Smith was really engaged with and, and called HRSD out on the fact that, that they're basically using, uh, phosphate and nitrogen swaps from other places that are more efficient.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that they can dump into Urbana Creek. And, um, it, it, it never got any traction. And I know I've talked to Pete about this whole thing because he was trying to push it when he was on the board of supervisors. And for whatever reason, it never got any traction and I, I don't know what the, what the downside.
Well, you know, again, there was a lot of investment, we'll, I don't know, I guess we'll make copies so that everybody has one. I'll get copies.
Maybe enter it into the record.
Enter, yes, enter, um, Pete's, um, uh, letter to the town council. And, you know, uh, what do you call it? Um, out on Rem, Remlik, what is that housing area where Emily Davies lives?
Kilmer's Point.
Kilmer's Point, Kilmer's Point, they use, they use, uh, a drain field.
Yes.
Yeah. They use a drain field. It's, I mean, this is not, this is an old technology, but it's been improved in many, many ways. And it never made, I couldn't figure out why we were gonna pump all of our sewage to Yorktown or to Williamsburg. It just never really made sense to me.
Still playing.
Yeah, I know it. I know it.
I guess the Urbana plant.
No.
The Saluda plant.
Right.
And they're talking in terms of if this development between Cook's Corner and, uh, Saluda comes about.
Oh, yeah.
They're thinking in terms of pumping that to the Saluda.
Plant.
So that'll be another whatever gets-
Another, yeah, yeah. So, you know, there's, there's the cost, there's the environmental impact, there's, you know, and it would certainly reduce the cost of, uh, those of us who pay for our H, HRSD bills, so.
And they're talking about a pipe to, uh, West Point in 17 years that will go to Yorktown. But how many years will it be before it gets to?
I don't know. I think it's gonna take a long, long, long time. So, and again, you know, I don't, we can do anything about this, but I think it's worth our talking about it. So how do I do this?
I think it's worth doing something and starting to work on this.
Okay, hang on just a minute. Yes.
Agreement that was executed between the town and HRSD.
Okay.
I have handled transactions where a locality gave their wastewater system to HRSD. And it's kind of gone, so there would need to be potentially a discussion about-
How do you get it back?
How do you get it back or how do you modify?
We don't want it back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would be interested in the historical minutes upon this, I mean, was the sewer system run by town at one point?
Yes.
So what, why did the council get rid of it? I'm assuming because of the environmental costs?
Yeah, cost.
So that's-
Environmental costs.
We couldn't afford it.
Right.
Right.
Right. Well, but again, if you, if you go, if you go this direction, you know, then again, so, okay, so I'll ask that Pete Mansfield's, I'll ask that Pete Mansfield's a letter to council be entered into the record and I'll pass that along to Christine for that. And, uh, if we can pursue it for further discussion, I'd also ask that copies be made for council to see.
I have one.
Pete is available, you know, if and when we would want him to talk about it.
Maybe he could spearhead something for us.
Well, I know he tried when he was on the board of supervisors and it never got traction because I, I, my bet is the fear of the county was that they would end up having to take the sewage handling back into their control and do it themselves. And just as Mr. Tuning is suggesting, we don't want to take it back and then have no way to, to, to deal with it.
Well, we would have the way to deal with it before we took it back.
Yeah, we don't want it.
Yeah.
And the county was also thinking about, uh, sewer to Delta Ville. And they were talking about a pipeline that would run from, um, what, Saluda to, to the Piancetank Bridge.
Right.
And then they'd bring in a pipe on the, on the other side and they'd pump to Yorktown. But all that's fallen through.
Right.
I know it, I know it.
I, I would say that, I watched, there's a pretty YouTube video about HRSD, it's the Swift plant going in down on the other side of the Montra Mary Mac and they just put a pipeline under the James from Newport News over there. I guess that's technically Suffolk, but.
Yeah.
We're there, I, one of the first in the nation to treat their affluent well enough that they can drink it and they even give out little plastic bottles of it. If I want to drink it, but anyway. But the idea is to pump it back in the ground and I would say a middle ground would be to ask them, you know, can we get on that? What's that gonna cost?
Yeah.
We want to get the affluent out of the creek.
Right.
But to be do that, we'd have to be on their sewer network fully and-
Robbie, the reason they want to pump it back in the ground is because we're pumping so much water out from agriculture that we're actually sinking.
Right.
You want to see the video, I'll be glad to look, I'll look it up and send. And they really do get water bottles on it.
It's fascinating. Yeah, that, that, uh,
That was mentioned in that presentation.
Remember he was talking about, uh, when they put the water back in the, back in the ground there, that they get a positive pressure at the West Point plant.
Right, say that again, sir.
When they're, when they put, wherever that is, um, Suffolk, in Suffolk, when they, when they take that treated affluent and put it into an aquifer that's actually below our Potomac aquifer.
Yeah.
It's like 3,000 feet down. When they turn those pumps on in Suffolk, they get a positive pressure reading in West Point. That's how the hydraulics work.
Yeah.
West Point sucks down more water.
Yes.
Than all the counties around us.
Yes. They gotta use that water to, yeah, pulverize that wood.
It's been a sort of a political issue for some time, but nobody wants to, that's a question, because it, they're such a dynamic, uh, economic source for our community.
Yep.
All right, do we need to go into closed meeting?
We, we do and I'd like for the, um, attorney to read the motion.
Okay.
Is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for the discussion of the potential acquisition of real property for a town hall? And the reason is because discussion in an open meeting would either negatively affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town council.
Okay. I'll make the motion. So, Lou?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to hang around and come back.
Thanks, Ben. No, thank you, Ben. Yep, just go sit in the conference room.
Oh, let me tell you guys, um, the, the-
Christine, there are motion to reconvene in open session and certify that only the matters that were discussed to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered.
Second.
And if each of you would individually so certify.
So certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify.
Whatever you-
I so certify.
I forgot. You were gonna say something.
No, we were here to-
Any other announcements or?
We're in public. Yes, motion to adjourn.
Aye.
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 Aye.